It is 6:30 PM on August 10, 2023, and I am calling the City Council meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. And I'm going to ask this time if Councilmember Pageant would please prepare for me.
Well, I want to thank you so much for allowing each of us to be here to participate in our city's business, to pray that all decisions be made with your honor and your glory. Oh, we love you, and thank you for everything that you do for us, to do with us, and let us prosper and do well, forgive us for all our sins. We do ask this name from Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. And if you'll stand, you're a blessing. My pleasure awaits us through the flag of the United States of America. And to the public who would wish to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to start off with my mayor announcements to, first of all, we all know that our friend and City Councilmember Chuck Powell passed away two days in March 2020. He was born in Liberty, and his love of the city, the city of Liberty, was at the service of his community. Chuck went above and beyond his civic duties and responsibilities as a citizen. He served on City Council since 2013, being voted in by his council peer in his neighborhood of town. Chuck faithfully volunteered at city events and always did it with a smile on his face. Even in the past couple of months, when we could all see that he wasn't doing well physically, he showed up to the council meetings. As a matter of fact, just last month, we met in a parking lot, we both got here together, and I could tell that he just was not feeling well. And I mentioned, I asked him, "How are you doing?" And he was on for me and told me that he wasn't really feeling well that night. And I told him, I said, "Mr. Powell," I said, "you don't have to be here. We understand that you're not well. We understand you can be at home." And his response to me was, "Erica, I didn't run and win my seat to sit at home." So he pushed himself to be at the council meetings because he saw that it was his responsibility to the people of Liberty. He didn't quit. As sick as he was, he did not quit. So tonight, we lovingly remember our friend and City Councilmember Chuck Powell, and we're grateful that we had the honor of serving with him. We are appreciative of the time that he sacrificed in his life to serve the city and people he loved. At this time, I just want to say a brief prayer and thanks for me. Dear him and Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for Chuck Powell and for allowing him to be a part of our sweet city of Liberty. We thank him for his kind and gentle spirit. We thank you for the example of serving and encouraging others. Lord, and I pray that we will all learn and follow the example he set for all of us in all of those areas, as well as seeing the best and not the worst people. Lord, we thank you that he is at rest in having the view this very moment. Amen. I'm just going to start with the beginning. All right, so next, I'm running nonsense. We did have, and I don't know, I'm sorry if this is on your, like, this is on your report, but we did have an administrator's, don't make some coffee with you administrator. It was actually an open discussion, and that was something that I know that they might have started this. This is something that he said he would have a topic for each meeting. And we had a great turnout the first time. We had a pretty good turnout with some citizens that are good quality citizens that came and showed up for the internet meeting. And so out of that, we have an unofficial internet committee that are made up of citizens here. So that was very encouraging to see that and just to see that we've got productive citizens that want to do what they can to help in the city where they can. So we've gotten some good things happening with that, and I'm sure Michael will talk more about that in his report. But last week, we, last, I don't remember what was it, last month? We had another meeting, or second meeting, and that was an open discussion. We wanted to open that up to the public to come and just bring any question, any concern, anything that they wanted to bring. And I was looking forward to hearing what everybody had to say, and nobody showed up except for my husband, my supporting husband. We did have one council member, Whittaker was there as well. But that was a great opportunity that was missed by the public. So I can't say, there's no excuse. We gave a great opportunity to hear anything you wanted to say, but you weren't there. So maybe we'll do that sometime on the other line. And I think that about wraps it up. We did have the train situation finally, you know, but the train was there for two days, walking intersection. But, you know, just so everybody understands, the city has no control over that. We have no control over the train. But we did do our best to try to find out what was going on and if there were any way of getting in. But of course, again, like I said, we have no control. But it's great that we have access around it. So we just all got to learn that that's all part of that, being in a small town with the railroad that goes straight through the middle of town. But we're all good, and we all survived that. All right, so that is it. That wraps up my announcements. Next, we've got, yes, Michael.
I just want to say you're welcome. Bailey and I got tired of hearing everything. We went and pushed it.
Bailey, you got to push it out.
So you're welcome.
So next, we've got our presentation. We've got Mr. Larry Finney here from Rainy Finney, who's going to head up and give his presentation on our 2023 audit. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not sure if that's on, but it's not as loud as you can.
It has no batteries working in it, so you're going to have to scream at us. One of these days, I'll remember those batteries.
Well, first of all, I want to say good evening and thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you. We really enjoy it. We enjoy the people you have here. And I was just talking with Michael a little bit earlier this evening. Hopefully, we can get Christie to stick around for a little while so we've got some continuity. You'll see when I talk about some of the issues that happened this last year during the audit, a lot of it was because there was a lot of turnover in that particular area. The train are real difficult for the city when it comes to trying to just maintain all the records and everything the way that you want to. So what I'd like to do is I just want to very briefly kind of hit the highlights. I think you all have probably pored through those financial statements that you received, paid by pay. But what we'd like to do is just take a few minutes to talk about two things. One is the results of the audit. And then, two, what does the financial position of the city look like at the last year-end June 30, 2022? So, and I'd like to start out and remind you that there's really two pieces to this that are really important from our perspective. One is you have the financial statements themselves, and that gives you a lot of information in there. But what we don't always think about all the time is what's behind the scenes, and that's all the internal controls and the processes and the procedures that every employee and council member, mayor are involved in, one way or another. And that is just as important because if those things are not working well, then it's going to make it very difficult for all that information that's supposed to be in those financial statements to really be accurate and complete the way we want it to. So I always like to mention that because we're going to talk about that in just a minute. So then what you ask us to do is to come in and perform our audit. And there's a couple of things I'd like to remind you about that. And one is when we're looking at performing our financial audit, we are not looking at every single transaction of the city here. You guys are not going to surround, especially Michael and Christie and Bailey, are not going to surround for that long. Do that kind of work. So what we're doing in our audit is we're providing reasonable assurance that everything's very stated. The second thing I'd like to remind everybody is the purpose of the financial audit really does not have anything to do with fraud. The general public tends to think that, but there's a whole other kind of audit called a forensic audit. And if there are any concerns about fraud, then that's what we would do. But obviously, if anything were to come up, that is something that we would bring to your attention. But there were no concerns in that area. So having said all that, for this year-end, June 30, 2022, we have issued, our goal, the end result of our work is the opinion that we issued. And so we have issued an unmodified opinion, and I know that doesn't mean anything to anybody, but that is the best opinion that you can receive. So it does not matter who you are, what kind of organization you are, how big, how small, your goal is to receive that unmodified opinion. So that's a good place for me to just stop and say, "Thank you, Michael." And I know you'll tell Christie, "Thank you for all the work helping us get that done." So with that, let's talk just very briefly about where you are financially at the last year-end. And we'd really like to start with your general fund fund balance. And the reason we like to start there is if there's even one measurement that somebody is going to want to look at to say, "Hey, how are we doing?" They're going to want to look at your unassigned fund balance and general fund. That's a little bit like for us personally, when we take all of our assets and cash and everything, minus everything, we only really have left over, but it's all said and done. That's what this general fund unassigned fund balance represents. And so for this last year, you saw a very healthy increase in your general fund fund balance primarily due to the ARPA money that you received, the American Recovery Grant money that you received. But your general fund fund balance increased almost $700,000 to about $1.8 million. Some of that is non-spendable, some of it is restricted. You actually have about $263,000 is restricted for your road maintenance fees, a little bit of unspent bond proceeds. You had some fund balance that was committed to sanitation trucks. And so when it was all said and done, what you had is a little under $1.5 million that was unassigned general fund balance, basically available for future operations. And I'll talk in just a minute about how we got to that point. That represents almost 50% of what your expenditures were for the year. Very healthy. Depending on who you talk to, everybody's going to say somewhere between two and four months, which would be about 16% to 32%, is kind of a good goal to have. So if you're at 49%, that's a good healthy fund balance. And a significant improvement from where we were not that long ago. So love to see those kind of results. The main thing, if you're following along with the powerpoint we have in Slides 5 and 6 on page 3, how did we get there? So your general fund fund revenues were about $3.3 billion. That was about $750,000 increase over the prior year, about a $770,000 increase over what you budgeted. Again, ARPA funds is really the reason for that. And then you'll see on your general fund expenditures, your general fund expenditures were about $3 million. That was a $288,000 increase over the prior year and about $430 more over what you had budgeted. And that increase over budget is primarily for capital purchases that you did between vehicles, garbage trucks, and those kinds of things. So those were planned expenditures above and beyond budget. If you go to the next page, I want to talk about the water and sewer fund for just a minute. You know, this continues to be an issue and risk for the city. I'm not going to read all the financial results, but you can see the financial results from the year. You spent a lot of the bond proceeds that you had received. You still have a pretty decent amount of funds that are due from the general fund. You can see there as well. But as y'all know, I know I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but from our perspective, because of the de-hack inspection and the consent order and all that good stuff, that continues to be a risk. That's part of the reason I would be really encouraged to see you get the ARPA funds that you got so that you continue to hopefully make some good progress in that area as well as using it grabbing rounds. So you made some great progress with pump and lift stations and some of the other things that you did well. The other issue that I wanted to mention because I'm hoping, it continues to be an issue, but I'm hoping this is a replacement of the water meters will really have an impact on your water loss. What we do every year is we look at how much water you purchase versus how much it actually sold. And when we look at what's kind of a good barometer, we tend to look at and see if it's 10% or under. So it's pretty much in single digits or barely in the double digits. That's pretty typical of what we see for a good operation. Yours is significantly higher than that. But you had a lot of old water meters, and I'm really hoping that replacing some of the infrastructure and then replacing the water meters will really have a good impact on that. So we'll obviously take another look at that as we continue moving forward. The next page, Slide 11, just kind of gives you the highlight. In addition to the general fund, the water sewer fund, you have some special revenue funds, and you've got money that's restricted in terms of how it can be used. So you can see the $263,000 in total. Most of that is your recreation and tourism that you have that's restricted in terms of how you can extend that. And you've got your veterans assistance loan, overloaned to you as well. The next slide just kind of gives you the highlights of your capital assets and your debt in terms of where you stand. You can see you did a significant amount of activity this year on the sewer and water side of things, as well as purchasing some vehicles. And then you can see your outstanding debt is a little over $2 billion now. It increased due to some of those capital purchases, and you're making your scheduled debt service arrangements just the way you should be. The other thing that we do, really two other things that we do as part of the financial audit, is when you receive a significant amount of federal funds, the federal government actually asks us to look at your compliance with how you're spending those federal funds because you received a significant amount of ARPA money. Very thankful that the federal government basically allowed you, if it was less than a certain dollar threshold, you could just recognize it and basically call a revenue loss. You move it right in the general fund. No restrictions in terms of how you use it or anything. So that's what the city was able to do, which is great. So no compliance issues in looking at those funds and what you've done with those. But the other thing that we do is we like to make sure that as we see ways that the city can continue to improve in terms of how you do what you do, internal controls, processes, procedures, anything that we see, we like to bring that to your attention. So we sat down with the mayor, with Michael, and with Christie, and went through a lot of things in a lot of detail, a problem order and death in some of it. But just all the ideas that we wanted to bring to the city and say, "Here's how you can continue to get better at what you do." If we consider those significant enough, they are put in writing. And so we've got one comment that is actually in the back of the financial statements. And it basically was related to, we had to do a lot of extra work this year in order to get your financial information accurate and complete. I fully believe that that is almost all due to all your turnover that you had. You basically, if you're starting the year and the end of the year, you have three different people, right? So I think if Christie will stick around, that you will see a significant improvement next year. So I'm not too concerned about that at all. The other thing is because the city is pretty small in terms of its financial operations and general operations, there tend to be issues with what we call segregation of duties. And basically, that means there isn't always enough people so that sometimes one person is really doing more than they ideally would be in a perfect situation. So several recommendations that we continue to talk about, and I know Michael's already had some meetings with staff and will continue to address those. So no real concerns, but just continue to try to help the city get better at what you do. So that's really it. Good financial condition, encouraged we can give the ARPA money. Got that unmodified opinion that's kind of the goal of that. And just wanting to encourage you as council to continue to make sure that Michael and the staff are continuing to make improvements in what they're doing. And I'm really encouraged by where the city is heading compared to where we were a few years ago. So keep up the good work. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
People want to have the sale of the trash truck came after we leave this with your reference. You know, Michael, when did we sell them?
Yes, it would have come after this.
Okay. That's the most thing. So the reference to that, that will come out when I start the round.
Yes.
I also want to make sure I'm reading right.
Yes, you were.
Anything else?
Larry, thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to thank Michael and Christie again. Really appreciate it, working with them. And I feel like our staff and them really work well together and is where we need to be. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Your staff was pleasant and was there, you know, they were in City Hall. And so thank you for all of our, you know, it was a long drawn-out situation.
We got through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, we've got public session in a second. So we have a second speaker this morning. All right, we've got the approval of the minutes for 11th regular session. Do I have a motion to approve this? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Shune Lane. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Councilmember Pageant. Do I have any discussion?
I saw one here on the motion for approval of this contract with the city administrator. It says that it was six O's, and it should be the six one. Six one with also an O, so that's the only one. At the end, it's where it's, the, 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 the. This is the, the, the.
So we can.
Yes, just a correction.
All right. So we got correction. Any other discussion? Right, all those in favor of confirming with that correction? Can you see the bottom of the screen right? You can say no. All right, that was unanimous though. All right, we have the, our finished business, the Golden Lots of New Business, which is the first reading of 2022, 05, 4 minutes to amend section 20-3, new districting. So we just had our, prior to the meeting, we had aides sants from the county registration board of elections come and talk to us about that. So basically, the U.S. Constitution requires a federal census every 10 years to get us up to date on the county's, country's population. And the districts and boards have to be of equal population to comply with the U.S. Constitution, district boards. So that is why we're doing this. And they, we've got a map with the lines drawn, and council saw that and discussed it, asked questions of the aides, and so I'm going to ask now for the motion that we accept this first reading as written these lines wrong the way they are.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Bradyfield. Do I have a second?
Awesome.
And I have a second by Councilmember Maxi. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, can signify by raising your right hand and say no.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That was unanimous. All right, we can move on to Department Head Reports. Chief, do you have a report for us today?
Good afternoon. Can I read your report now?
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to do that or not.
I don't have to do that.
Okay, well, you don't have to. I know you did last time, so if you're good with just handing it to us, then you've got in our report, so.
Definitely. Any questions?
Then we're good? We're good with that. Any questions? Okay. Our public works is in there as well. I'll read the record because I have announcements that would like to come in here. Volleyball and flag football signups have come to an end, and we will have three 12 and under and two nine and under volleyball teams. Flag football will have 129 teams. Baseball and softball signups are going on now until the end of February. And the RIC received a bid to host a 10 and under boys state championships here in Liberty, the basketball, on March 3rd. What's that? Is this an old one?
Not paying attention.
We already did that.
We must have not been paying attention.
Okay, well, that's, that was old news, but it was good that we had that hosted here. It was a good experience. I went and saw these guys play and had a good time. So, all right, so next on our report, we've got our city administrator report.
You're not going to read mine?
You get to read yours. I, you. We want you to wrap it when you.
You might as well sit down there.
I was saying, it doesn't work.
Can you see the light or do you?
I think mine works.
Yeah, there you go.
First, I do want to thank Mr. Finney for showing up to do this. Believe it or not, it was a last-minute thing. There was some scheduling mixed up. So I want to thank you for being so flexible and helping us, not only with the audit, but the findings or something that will help us work on getting better. They weren't the type of findings where you were looking for fault, you were looking for ways to improve. Also, the way you helped Christie being new, she just felt so much more energized. Believe it or not, after the audit, she was more energized because she was learning so much from your staff, and I thank you guys for that. Also, Councilmember Graybeal, you found something wrong, but I promise you, I did, at your suggestion, implement Grammarly in City Hall.
It wasn't grammatically, it was respectful.
I just, I did implement it. They are, they are using that. So hopefully, they're supposed to do that before they post anything. You know how it is, a lot of times you post things, right, and you make those mistakes, but they're supposed to put those and have them checked by Grammarly before they post. All of us, not just them, me as well, before anything is posted. But getting back on to the actual report, I'll start with the financial report. I figured with the audit, I didn't know much more numbers you wanted. And also, there were a couple of things I saw on it that I wanted to get some clarification from Christiane, and unfortunately, she's on vacation. So if possible, I'd like to get, she's supposed to be back Wednesday. I'd like to ask those questions and get that financial report done by this Wednesday by end of business, if that's acceptable. There's just a couple of questions on there. We, her being new, there's some things that I want to make sure are in the right places. And so I want to make sure I talk to her about that before I give you incorrect information. But with the administrator's report, I'll be scheduling a quarterly ADA committee meeting this month to discuss City Hall adjustments. The first will be an ADA crosswalk from Sarland Park to the front of the building. And the other discussion will involve placing a lower counter for utility payments to make it more ADA accessible to those in wheelchairs. For economic development, I'll be meeting with retail strategies this week to discuss next steps for the downtown revitalization plan. This is a basic meeting. It's not the same meeting where they're coming in May. It's not the same meeting where they're coming in May to do an entire day thing as well as a town hall meeting. This is just a small meeting to get some ideas of what they might have moving forward. Grants, I know this seems very repetitive, but with EPA, we're actually working through the contracts with two organizations that will assist us through the EPA project. But this also includes a comprehensive community outreach strategy, which I think is very, very important. And once we have that strategy in place, I will forward the information during the next council meeting so that we can get that out to the public and let them know about this outreach strategy. Water meters, as I reported in the previous council meeting, we have started receiving the radios required for the new water meters. This is an ongoing process to not only install the meters, but to switch over the software components. Please make it constituents aware that we are working diligently to have this, or to have this affect our customers as little as possible. I know Gloria, it's been a work for her because, you know, that we've been having issues with Tyler getting us the right information to put in the system so we get correct information back. So it's not necessarily our office, it's our contractor that we're having issues with right now, which is one of the other reasons why we're moving to a different system in the new year. But we just ask if they do contact you, if you could just let them know we are really working through that as quickly as possible and try and make it as much of a minimal impact to them as possible. Outreach, as the mayor mentioned, I began at administrator's town hall. Donuts and coffee with the administrator. It will soon just be coffee with the administrator because nobody eats the donuts. So it's just going to be coffee with the administrator. But it's discuss issues with the citizens of Liberty. I had that last month, and like the mayor said, it was open discussion. The point was that anybody that had any questions that they're seeing on social media or this and that, they can come in and ask myself, the mayor, or council member a question concerning that to get it all clarified as quickly and efficiently as possible. And of course, we had no one show up to do that. So we might try to pepper those in throughout the year, open discussions, to see if we could get some people in there, but we got none. So well, no citizens attended this meeting. Myself, the mayor, and two, I think two council members, but I know at least one.
Citizen was bottom left.
Yes, but I thought you were there.
I was there for the meeting about the Internet and State for the first part of the.
That's right. That's right. But yeah, we were there in attendance to directly answer any questions our citizens may have instead of relying on social media posts. While this was disappointing, I'll continue these meetings for the foreseeable future. Each town hall has a specific subject to get positive ideas and feedback on how to improve our city in these areas. Any member of the council is invited to attend and witness the exchange of ideas. The next is regarding trash, and will be April 20th at 6:00 p.m. here at Rosewood. And the last thing, which we also spoke about just a minute ago, is the Internet Fiber Committee met last week to discuss the next steps in obtaining acceptable Internet for our citizens. It was decided to have an individual from the state government visit Liberty to get the whole story regarding our Internet problems. Also, I still want to urge all citizens to go on our webpage and click the link to take the survey regarding our Internet. It could help us improve moving forward with grant possibilities. And with that, I'm hoping for any questions anyone may have.
I guess we're good, but thank you, and thank you for your continued efforts in all that we do in City Hall along with our staff. We're very grateful for all the work and even some of the all the day automations.
I appreciate that. When you have a great staff, it makes things much easier to do more, you know? And we look forward to doing more. They're getting trained. Bailey and Christie have both not even been here a year yet, but they've grown by leaps and bounds, and I think they're a great asset as well as the other staff we have to the citizens of Liberty. They all take their positions very seriously. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we're moving on to our city council reports. How's motion? Councilmember Bradyo.
I have several constituents asked about the information progress on the environmental renovation and redesign that we talked about last year in terms of kind of how we're going to use its facilities. So I'll probably bring that up and eventually we can get that hack on the radar sometime in the next few months and start to move that.
All right, Councilmember Gray, nothing to report. And thank you, Councilmember Maxi. All right, thank you, and Councilmember Pacheco.
I have anything to report.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, that concludes the meeting then, so I will ask then if a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion. Okay, I have a motion by council. And the lady, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourned, we signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.